Good morning. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Work Session on Wednesday, March 31st, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Public participation in this meeting can be done either watching it live on Channel 4, attending in person, or going to the LHCaz.gov/tv. We also are receiving written comments during our public hearing items by emailing If you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Jim Dolan, here. David Lane, present. Michelle Lynn, here. Cameron Moses, here. Vice Mayor Jenny Koch, here. Mayor Kalshihi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item four on our agenda is the public hearing, 4.1, Presentation Discussion, Potential Direction to Staff on the Financial Condition of the City Including Budget for Fiscal Year 2020-21, Year End Estimates, Fiscal Year 2021-22 Annual Budget, Future Budget Estimates, and Potential Revenue Options. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Good morning. This morning, we prepared a somewhat short presentation for you just to look at the financial condition of the city as we've estimated it for June 30th of this fiscal year and projected it for the next four fiscal years after that. We are then going to take a look at some of the considerations that we need to keep in mind for some good long-term decision-making and some short-term decision-making, the condition of our city finances, as well as our other assets such as property and equipment. And then we're going to take a look at some of the revenue options that we have researched. Those were reviewed with the council at the retreat in January, but we'll have a review of those here with some updated information. The financial considerations that we would like to review this morning, first of all, the deferred capital and maintenance issue that we currently have. We have deferred our capital and maintenance of many of the city's assets over the years, and so we have a lot of city property and facilities, including equipment and vehicles, that have exceeded their useful lives. They're being kind of held together the best we can hold them together without using additional funds for replacement equipment. The maintenance on the facilities, due to lack of funding, has also suffered. The levels of service, we do have limited staff, and what we mean by that is that staff is struggling to maintain the current service levels that we have. We're doing more with less and have been doing that for many years. And the budgets haven't grown to accommodate additional staff or budget funding to allow for increased levels of service and even some adequate levels of service at the current level. If we are to expand any service levels in any areas, additional funding would be required, and that could be in the form of additional revenues. It could be in the form of expenditure reductions in other areas. One thing that we don't want to forget, the public safety personnel retirement system. Our unfunded liability for police and fire is around $60 million now. The pension funding policy currently shows 100% funding by 2036. We're not sure that's very feasible, especially at the current level. That would require an additional $4 million to be paid into the system in addition to what we pay on the pay-as-you-go basis. That $4 million just isn't there now in an annual amount that we would be able to pay that liability down by that projected date. We're currently looking at that policy to see how and when it could be updated with a more realistic figure, if it can be, based upon the requirements in state law. For the budget coming up, the FY '22 budget, we have learned that the PSPRS rate is increasing by six to eight percentage points. It's not going up 6%, it's going up six percentage points. It depends on the tier. It depends on whether it's police or fire, but the range is anywhere from six to eight percentage points. So it's going up from, if it's a 56% now, it's going up to 62%, 63%. So that is significant.
Yeah. Ms. Olson, when will we know what amount it's going to go up by?
Well, we have the percentages, but it depends on the tiers. So police, Tier 1 and 2 is going up 7%. Tier 3 for police is going up 8%. And then fires, same things, just different percentages, up to 57 and 54.
Okay. So when you go into the financial outlook, that'll already be taken into account in the actual forecast?
Yes. We've included that in the salaries and wages and benefits estimates.
Okay, great. Thank you.
In addition, with the purchase of 92 Acoma and the deconsolidation of the courts, we will be needing to adjust the court operations budget for the time at which we will start using that facility full-time for the use of that courthouse. We still have, you know, we're still at the early stages of design and then remodel, and then we need to, at the same time, be looking at what the total budget is going to be for just the operations to make sure that we have adequate funding there as well. What I'm calling legislative offsets, this is action taken by the state that is passed to the local governments over which we have no control. We have included in the projections that begin in FY '24 that we will receive a reduced share of the state income tax. They're doing it in increments. As you can see, FY '24, $289,000 reduction increases in '25, and then for each year thereafter, in that third year, it goes up to $867,300 for each year. So the 10-year total for that reduction alone is $7.8 million. The Capital Improvement Plan, the idea there is that we use one-time revenues for one-time expenditures, and that's true for not only the Capital Improvement Plan, but for any capital outlay. The availability of new resources would allow us to increase the amount that the General Fund contributes to the Capital Improvement Plan. Right now, it's limited to about $2.2 million per year, which is based upon the estimated construction sales tax. So it's probably a little bit higher number now, but 2.2 is in the ballpark. The CIP is limited to what we can fund. We have had balanced budgets with fully funded Capital Improvement Plans. However, there are items that are needed in the future for the city that have not been included in the Capital Improvement Plan due to lack of funding. So we still have needs outside of what's currently in the Capital Improvement Plan in order to meet the needs of our community for the current levels of service. Budget Stabilization Reserve has been included in the estimates at the current rate of 25%. And that's 25% of the annual five-years' worth of average of sales, or not just sales tax, of General Fund revenue. So we take that average, we apply 25%, and that's the amount that gets set aside for the Budget Stabilization Reserve. As everyone knows, our budget is heavily reliant on sales taxes, on sales tax revenues, which means that with a volatile source like that, that we are predominantly dependent upon, we could have significant budget shortfalls in the future and not have a lot of time to react for that. Therefore, staff is researching what other cities are using for their stabilization reserve amounts to make sure that ours is adequate at 25% and reasonable. Technically, 25% is only three months' worth of revenues. That's not a lot of time to react, considering that we have a two-month lag in even getting our reported revenues. So we'll be looking at that, and we'll be back to council should we want to recommend a higher level for that. The Position Analysis was implemented as of last October. The net increase to the employee costs were $3.1 million for fiscal year '21, and the important thing on that number for future is that that amount compounds every year at about, we're using 3%. Some employees will start to cap out under the new system. Therefore, we don't believe it would be at the full 3.5%. But moving forward, that's a number that's going to go up consistently, and it'll have a compounding effect. It'll go up, the 3% will be on the higher number each year. So here is a look at what we currently have showing for our 2021 year-end estimates. This is what we believe the numbers will be close to come June 30th of 2021. We show our beginning resources, then we add the revenues, and we have shown all of the increases that we've been receiving in sales tax, which have been over and above what we budgeted. And it's also been over and above in almost every category what last year's numbers were. So that is reflected in here. That higher number in '21 reflects the CARES funding. So that's kind of an anomaly there. When you look at FY '22, that removes any CARE dollars. It removes any of the new American Rescue Plan dollars. Those have not been included in this budget. Those will be one-time monies, and we still don't know what the expenditures that are eligible for those funds look like. So we've not included those at this time. We've estimated the expenditures as well each year, and that includes, on the average, about a 3% increase in salaries and wages and benefits and all those costs associated with staffing, subtracted the debt payments throughout this period, and also reflected the transfers out. The majority of these transfers out are related to the transfer of the construction sales tax equivalent to CIP. So as you can see on this slide, there is actually a surplus for each year. Then we come down, and we subtract the Budget Stabilization Reserve from the available resources, giving us our ending available resources. What is not reflected on this one and is reflected on this worksheet are all of those deferred expenditure items and deferred liability issues. So when you apply estimates related to deferred maintenance, vehicles, and staffing to what is left, when you take your revenues and resources less your expenditures, you can see that we still are back in deficit funding. We did include the PSPRS unfunded liability amount of 4 million just so that we could see the effects on the overall financial condition of the General Fund. And again, we are focused on the General Fund for this presentation. So when we take those liabilities and deferrals into consideration, we still have a structural deficit. So it's just something for council to keep in mind, just so you can see the big picture and kind of see the picture down the road up to five years to help you make, you know, the important decisions that need to be made. Now, for these deferred items, we took a look, you know, how we came up with some of these numbers. We took a look at what the departments have requested in the last couple of years related to their needs on some of those deferral items between vehicles and facility issues and facility improvements. So this would include patrol vehicles. It includes fire engines, fire trucks, and fire vehicles. So it includes, there's court capital in there of about $1 million. So that's an idea of the types of items in there that could be funded should those resources become available at that higher level. The revenue options that we've looked at, this is very similar, and in some cases identical to what we showed you at the retreat this year. Potential revenue sources, the commercial lease tax. Under the city's current code, businesses are exempt from the commercial lease tax, and Lake Havasu City is one of only three cities in the state that does not have a commercial lease tax. The other two cities are Springerville and Oro Valley. The commercial lease tax, and these are very rough estimates and conservative estimates. We believe that each 1% of a commercial lease tax that might be applied would generate $250,000. So if we wanted a 3% commercial lease tax, we estimate that would generate $750,000 on an annual basis. This type of tax implementation would require the truth and taxation process, and then council, once you get through that, should you desire to add the commercial lease tax, you would adopt an ordinance, and that would be the form of your approval. For sales tax, an additional 1% generates about $13 million. When we did our estimates in January, so much of what was coming in this year was still unknown, and we had estimated that 1% to generate about $10 million. So we've reflected the additional revenues that we're seeing in sales tax. In these figures and in these estimates, we have tried to be conservative, but also reflect that we understand that there has been an increase. We ran our numbers, and we applied different methodologies to it to try and remove the pandemic effect on the numbers so that, you know, had the pandemic not occurred, here's where we think the sales tax would have been. So with those items taken into consideration, we think 1% would generate about $13 million based upon the current estimates. The current sales tax rate is 2%. And again, this one requires the truth and taxation process and then an ordinance adoption. In addition, the city has room for a property tax rate increase. If we went to the maximum, right now, we have a 2% levy allowance for each year so we can go up 2% without triggering the truth and taxation process. Our current rate is .67%, and the allowed rate, had we increased it up to the maximum over all of these years, would be at .9015. That additional levy, if we went from the current to the maximum, would be about $1.9 million per year. What the city has done in the last three years, as we've left the rate the same, and with the increase that we've seen in assessed valuation, the actual levy or revenue has increased, though the rate stayed flat. So we have been experiencing some increases related to leaving the current rate the same. We estimate for FY '22 that if we did that again, the increase would be about an additional $263,000. So not a horribly low number, but it's certainly not anywhere the amount of revenue that would make a big difference in our ability to fund our future items, the deferrals and the liabilities. Each 5 cents, based upon these numbers, generates an additional $400,000. So as you look at this, if you wanted to consider any increases to the rate for each .05 or each 5 cents, we would generate an additional $400,000 should that get increased. Again, every year, we apply the truth and taxation process to the property tax rate increase due to the fact that the AV or assessed valuation has increased, even though the rate has been left flat. And then council approves that as part of the budget process. The bed tax rate, an additional 1% of the current bed tax rate would generate about $340,000. The current rate is 3%. And any increases in the bed tax rate, as long as we're meeting the statutory requirements of what we have to dedicate for tourism, which we are, any increase, council, if you wanted to dedicate that to anything in particular in the General Fund, you could, or just, you know, in the General Fund, it could be for public safety, or parks and recreation, or a percentage to each, that you would have that flexibility. Generally, funds that flow into the General Fund are not segregated and applied specifically. It applies just to the fund as a whole, but you would have that prerogative should you want to do that. And then just for informational purposes, we put up the comparable cities. I used the comparable cities that were in the Position Analysis as well as the Utility Rate Study. So the rate study had two more cities than the Position Analysis, so I included all of them. So you can see where we rate, and Lake Havasu is about a little over halfway through that. You can see that we have no commercial tax rate, and you can see that Oro Valley has none. Springerville wasn't one of our comparable cities, so I didn't include that. But you can also see the comparisons in sales tax and bed tax. I included the primary property tax rate for comparison purposes, and then I also included the secondary property tax. We don't have a secondary property tax, but some cities do, so I wanted to reflect both of those so that gave you a truer picture of what the truly, true-assessed secondary property tax was for each of these cities and how they compare it to Lake Havasu. So for the rest of this budget calendar, when the council will be seeing the next set of numbers, unless you call a special meeting ahead of April 22nd, April 22nd would be the date that we have our first, kind of the budget and CIP overview work session. Then on May 13th, we would have the second budget work session and CIP work session. And then June is the month in which you would receive the tentative budget. You would adopt the CIP and the tentative budget, and then finally adopt the budget at the end of June. And then typically, the July 13th meeting this year is when you would adopt the property tax levy that would be effective for the fiscal year '22. So that was a quick run through our estimates for this fiscal year. So I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for questions and discussion.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Ms. Olson. Can you just elaborate a little bit on the 4 million for the PSPRS? Is that what they're telling us by 2036, or where's that policy come from?
That's our policy.
Okay.
And that's what we estimated a year and a half ago.
Got it. Okay. I appreciate you giving us the really broad, big-picture view with two different areas. Obviously, we've experienced some robust sales tax collections and property tax collections over the last year, which have given the new year-end estimates. It's a completely different conversation that we're having today versus what we were having at our council work session, our planning session in January. So, you know, based on some of these areas, we can, there's room to do some of the deferred capital expenses that are in front of us, but there's also room to keep rates the same and be able to still provide the services. I think the point that Ms. Olson was trying to convey was that there's a lot more that has to be done, but I think that we can kind of chip away at those with current revenues based on what this five-year forecast has. So I'll open it up to questions in council and discussion amongst the council, kind of on a direction or thoughts that we might have on this individually, so we can come to some sort of a consensus to give staff direction. Councilmember Campbell?
On your general funds, I see back in 2015, 16, 17, back a few years back, it shows funds in the 42 million to 46 million, so it looks like our revenues are up about $20 million. Am I looking at it the same? Is that correct?
Without going back and looking at the report that you're looking at, I don't really know how to make an apples-and-apples comparison, but we do start with what is in our annual report each year to at least the most current number that we have that's accurate, and the one that's been audited is typically what we'll include, so.
Okay. Well, I've been studying this as well, and I'm obviously not an expert like you are, but when I see General Fund a back, a few years back, being in the 46 million, and we're up into the 60 million, $20 million more, where we ran the same-sized city, obviously we still have infrastructure, we have lots to do, we've done a lot in the past, but it looks like the city's revenues have been coming in pretty fluently. And I'm just curious to know why all the expense, like the doomsday. You know, to me, it seems like the city has been doing extremely well, and the citizens of this community have been working extra hard, especially over the last couple of years. So this all of a sudden needing more tax revenues is quite concerning to me.
Ms. Olson, if I may. In 2015, there was still the expenditure limitation, so there's going to be some debt that isn't reflected in those same numbers, but I believe, let's just get back to the base of what we're here today, is we have the General Fund, updated estimates of five years, which look robust and fantastic, completely a different conversation. And then maybe what you're referring to is the doomsday, I think that's just to give us the big picture. That doesn't mean that that's necessary, that we need to do revenue increases. I mean, that's the discussion we need to have amongst the council this morning to decide if that's a direction. So, okay.
No doomsday.
No doomsday. Yeah, I think today's, I think the message of today is that estimates for year-end look fantastic, that we are in different conversations than we were a year ago, than we were even just three months ago. I think there's really good news. And Ms. Olson, do you have something to add?
Just one thing to add to that, too. In addition to the expenditure limitation, we would be bringing in the revenues, and then we couldn't spend them, but what historically has happened, if we always look at the expenditure side as well as the revenue side, though the revenues were increasing in a certain percentage, the expenditures were growing at an even higher percentage. So even though revenues were going up, the expenditures were going up and outpacing the revenues. So that's typically what happened. That's how we, the expenditure limitation is how we got our big fund balance in General Fund, and then we've been spending that down due to spending it on one-time items and some ongoing items.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Thank you. Joe, can we go back to one of your first slides where you had all the different numbers on there? There you go. Okay. On that one there, it shows that our debt payments this year estimated at $900,000, next year $1.2 million, then it drops down to half a million, and then even lower than that. And what's the, what are the debt payments, and why are they higher this year than they were last year, and they're going to go down from there?
Yeah, we had bonded for Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, an advanced payment on that, so we're paying that debt off. And it's usually just a, I think we have some fire department, fire equipment leases, and as we get to the end of those, the amounts that are due are less and less. So those are the types of things that are in the debt number.
Okay. So the $13 million that we borrowed a couple of years ago, that's, I thought that had been paid off already, so that's what part of that is, is getting paid off.
It's just like the last little bit of it. That's part of the reason it's gone down so much.
Okay. And then does that include the sewer debt and debt payments?
No, this is General Fund only.
General Fund only. Okay. Thank you. And then PSPRS unfunded liability, that $4 million a year. What is our current funding, do you know about where we're at? Is it, I think we were, last I heard, we were like 53%?
I don't have that, but I can look that up for you.
49% funded?
Not exact numbers.
Yeah, it's around the 50% mark. I think I've seen 49% to 52% funded.
Okay, and by 2036, we're looking at 100% funding?
That's what the pension funding policy was targeting, and I think we need to adjust that to something more realistic.
Yeah.
So we're looking at that.
I think 100% funding for PSPRS is really a waste of taxpayer dollars in giving money to a system that isn't working as well as it should be. You know, depending, I myself think 70% is good. People in your seat usually say 75% or 80%. So, yeah, I think that there's room to look at that as well. And then the bed tax that you brought up, the additional 1% bed tax, if, as, as the mayor said, right now, there's no, no need to be raising taxes, but we have to look down the future. Our job is to look five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road to make sure that we don't have these issues like right now, $7 million in deferred maintenance. That means, you know, a lot of our buildings are falling apart. I know our, our police station here, this building here has had a lot of deferred maintenance and needs, is going to need a lot of work. The Aquatic Center is going to need a lot of work, the fire stations need a lot of work, the, I'm sure the operations department down there needs a lot of work that we've been deferring over the years. So if we went down the road and say, a couple of years, and we had to raise that 1% bed tax, would that bed tax be required to be used for tourism-related? Because that's the way it was originally voted on for a bed tax, or would that be totally separate?
Since we're already committing the minimum that's required, the amount that's required, the way the statute reads, it's, it's something to the effect that it can't exceed a rate that's more than 2% above the retail tax rate.
Okay.
Without dedicating the additional funds to the tourism activities.
Okay.
So we think we would still fit within that.
Awesome. And then down the road, if we had to do something, I know we looked at, you had a lot of different taxes up there with the, the lease tax and all that. One of them was a 1% sales tax, one of them was a 1% bed tax. If we went down the road, we don't need to do anything right now, obviously, but down the road, if we went with a half percent sales tax and a half percent bed tax that the voters, the people in Lake Havasu would ask us to do, would that generate the amount of money that we need to take care of the structural deficit and the deferred maintenance on all of our buildings?
We would have to take a closer look at the actual numbers. These are, you know, estimates at this point, but it would certainly make, put a huge dent in that.
I think that would be the, the least, have the least effect on, on the citizens here in Lake Havasu. Obviously, as you said, we don't need to do anything this year, but we do need to look five, 10, 15 years down the road, so that's just something for us to look at. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lane? Any other questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Dolan?
I'm no expert or economist, but I just stayed on holiday and expressed. I think we might be seeing a little bit of inflation in the next year or two with everything going on and how fast we're printing money, so has that, I know it's kind of hard to predict, but how does that affect our, you know, revenues? I know we are a little bit protected because we get a percentage of what people are spending, so as prices go up, we still get a percentage of that, but how does that come into the mix?
In these numbers, we've tried to keep potential inflation in mind. I'm no economist either, certainly, I've been waiting for increased inflation for 15 years now, so we still don't, can't seem to, to have inflation. And in some cases, that's good, in some cases, it's bad. In the bond market, it's great, bonds, you can borrow money very low, but our interest earnings for our investments are also very low. So we've taken it into consideration as far as not being too aggressive with the increases overall in our revenues. We've tried to, to temper that with what we think is a reasonable increase based upon the market with the potential of growing inflation, but that inflation I wouldn't even expect to see until probably after FY '24. And even then, it'd be nominal. For now, that's what we think.
What about the property taxes? I know house prices have gone up quite a bit. Do we, are those also factored into those numbers, or when do we start seeing? Because I know the county will reassess and values will go up.
That'll get captured in the assessed valuation numbers.
Okay.
Which, applied to any tax rate, should the AV increase, then the, the revenue would increase.
Perfect. Just a comment, I mean, like I said, we are, we are at a good point with the city right now. The deferred maintenance, I've been saying it since I got in here, we, we did very well after 2008, recovering from the, that time period. We've definitely put off a lot of maintenance, and I think we, unfortunately, this is something we can kick down the street. We can kick the can down the street even further and probably be fine for a couple more years, but I, I think we definitely need to have that hard conversation right now, which is what we are having, because it is right around the corner. We are going to have equipment, bigger equipment breakdowns, and it just, like I said, I know in my business, it's, you have equipment up and running, you save time with employees, you, morale, it, it affects a lot of areas, and one thing I have learned about equipment breakdown is it never does it when you think you're okay. It's usually on a Friday at like 9:00 PM, so, and then it costs you way more than it probably was just to buy the new piece, you know, to piece it back together. So I, I, I know we're okay, and I know, you know, our five-year outlook without the deferred maintenance is looking really good, but I definitely think we need to do something. I like the idea of the bed tax being a couple percent more, is my personal opinion. It's something we do pass on to our visitors, and I don't think it will deter them in any way. I think we definitely have that economy that would support that, and it doesn't affect our local residents as, as much as a sales tax does. I'm not ruling that out, I'm not ruling anything out, but I think definitely the, the bed tax is something we could, we could start with, because tourism does have a lot of effect on our budget, police, fire, that we could put that money at least towards that area. So that's just my thoughts on that.
Yeah, so some of the thoughts on, on that area, when it comes to, to bed tax, we have renegotiated both the economic development contract and the bed tax contract, so we're getting those contributions already now into the general fund. So, you know, basically tourism paying for tourism. In addition, there is, you know, we are having robust sales tax collections, and the, the buildings are not crumbling. We, we do have a CIP budget that, that takes care of all of the priorities that are necessary. Certainly, there are things that need to be done, and we need to be, have a watchful eye on for the future, but that doesn't mean that, that, you know, these buildings are, are falling down, we're, we're in one of them. I mean, certainly, there's maintenance that needs to be done as on anyone's home or, or anyone's investment, but, you know, I'm, we're, we're in a good position right now financially, where we don't need to start with or try things, or, I mean, we do have these options that Jill's laid out several times, and, and when, when the time is necessary, but in the five-year forecast, I believe that Jill and her team have, have estimated revenues in a conservative way, which is fantastic, we should do that for planning purposes, but, you know, the, the ending resources prior to some of these deferred maintenance areas is, you know, $43 million. It's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money, and it's, it's our taxpayers' money. So we need to, to recognize those, those points, so. Councilmember Campbell, did you have a comment?
I do. I'm looking at the sales tax revenues. In 2016, we're at $19 million. This year, in 2020, we're at $28 million. And my grandmother used to always say that pigs get fed and hogs get slaughtered, so $10 million extra in funds, which is our tax dollars that our citizens are producing for us on a regular basis, we should be mindful of taking care of their dollars and be very thankful that they've grown our revenues $10 million in five years, just in sales tax.
Yeah, and just for those watching at home, and, and just kind of to put it out there, Ms. Olson had mentioned that with our sales tax and being so, so dependent on sales tax, it's kind of a vital source of revenue. So what that means is, is sales tax is all based on consumer spending. So if homeowners and citizens and visitors start retracting that spending for some reason, you know, the other, other expenses go up in their households, or whatever that might look like, then our sales tax collections go down. And so, you know, some more secure sources of, of revenue are, are property tax and, and those things that you can actually forecast out based on, on models, and it's a little bit more, more secure. So that's what, when we talk about a vital source of, of revenue, that's what that's looking like. And then a structural deficit in, in how it looks like here, you know, we've mentioned that we have spent more than we've taken in, and, and that sounds scary, and, and it is scary, but we knew we were doing that, taking and drawing down on resources we already had. So for, for those watching at home, that was part of the budget process, is that we, we had these resources that are the taxpayers, we started drawing down on those, but of course, that's not sustainable in the long term, and that's what really spurred some of these conversations. And, and based on prior to the pandemics, actual revenues and forecasted revenues, we've been talking about this now for, for a little over a year, but again, today's great report from Ms. Olson and her team, and the robust collections of, of revenues that we've received, both in sales tax, state shared revenues, income tax, I mean, all of the funds are, are doing well, but I believe that the point of today, in, in having the two different areas laid out for us, is, is just to be mindful of, of expenses that are coming down in the future that we're going to have to address in some manner. Any other questions or comments or thoughts from members of the council?
I think it's good to point out that just because expenditures go up, doesn't mean we are authorizing spending more money. I mean, everything, in my business, my revenues go up, but my expenses go up as well. Expenses are, a lot of expenses are out of our control, or what we get charged by other people, so of course we have to keep up. I've been on council for two years now, and I've seen the budget process. I don't think the pigs are getting fatter and all that part. I, I think we're, we still, I think we've asked them to do more with less for the last 10 years, and I think if we, if we don't give them more, we're, we're going to run in, no, the, and the building's not falling down. If it was, we'd have way, way, way bigger problems. It's the stuff we don't see that bites us in the butt when the plumber gets here at 2:00 in the morning to fix something, because there's a problem, or there's a flood, or there's a this, or there's a that. So like I said, those are the, those are emergencies that tend to get called and taken care of right then, and we pay top dollar for. It's a lot easier to fix something when it's almost ready to break than it does break. So I guess that's just my concern, is it's, it's not doomsday, but if it was doomsday, we'd, we'd be in way more trouble than we are right now. So I just want to make sure we're at least ahead of it as much as we can, so we avoid that two or three years from now for the next council that's sitting here, that wishes we would have done something now to shore up some of those deferred maintenance issues, so.
And I, I agree with you, Councilmember Dolan, and, and based on what's laid out here, I mean, the priorities of, of this council are included in here, which includes the positional analysis, the capital improvement plan. It gives room for Mr. Knutson and his team to add some, some elements to, to provide the services that are required of, of our operation and from our citizens and the priorities of this council. So I, I think that's laid out here. The only area that I do have some concern is the PSPRS, I, but I've had it for quite some time, and it has nothing to do with the city, it has to do with how that funds manage at the state level. They are an embarrassment to, to what they, they are doing, and, and they need to, to step up and do the right game. I, I suggest that maybe the Arizona State Treasurer takes over those funds to manage them in an appropriate way, so we can get proper returns going forward. But other than that, I, I think that what's laid out here today, and again, in a very conservative way, will allow us to address and set future councils up and our citizens for success in the future based on, on the data presented this morning.
And I personally believe we're going to save money in the long run if we maintain things at the highest of, of everything. I'm a big person about maintenance and making sure that everything's taken care of. I do not like deferred maintenance. All it does is cost you labor, material, time, equipment. I totally agree with you there. That's a priority in what I think municipal government needs to do.
Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. One of the things I think is not represented in this slide specifically is our people. I've kind of beaten this drum a couple of times, that every department I talk to, you know, needs, needs a little more help. I, I know we've done our work with the, with the positional analysis, getting everybody up to market raise, rates, getting them where they need to be. In my experience, running businesses, raises don't necessarily reflect morale or happiness within the job, or, or that people are able to do their job effectively. I think we need to give people help along with the raises, otherwise the raises will be for naught, and we'll be back, right back in the same situation we were before, prior to the positional analysis. I'm not saying that we need to go back to where we were in 2007, when we had over 550 employees, but we are still operating at or near where we were after the Great Recession in 2009. I'd like to make some strategic hires and, and, and get some, get some people in the right places to, you know, Jim, you talk about getting people the, the stuff they need. I, I agree with that, and, and deferring some of these maintenance, agree with that, not deferring some of this maintenance, agree with that too, but I think we need to get these people the help they need. And, and I'd like to see what that budget looks like, you know? Where, where's, to, to make a decision based on, you know, potential revenues down the road, if we need it, I don't think we should even talk about it until we talk about where we need to be from a staff level-wise, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. I just want to give a shout out to our city manager, Mr. Knutson, and the entire city staff for what you guys have done since the recession in 2008, and we're doing more with less, and having these deferred maintenance on your buildings and your vehicles and your staffing. You know, we hear from every department that, that we need additional resources and help, as, as Councilmember Moses said, and the deferred maintenance on the buildings, like Mr. Dolan said, you know, how many times have we heard, just here in the last six months, the, we need a new generator at the police department, we need to fix the swamp coolers and the humidity at the aquatic center, and we're replacing vehicles and tractors that are 17, 20 years old, because we've been deferring all of this, and you guys have been doing all this work with this equipment that is outdated and, and not having the staffing that you need, and that's where that deferred costs come in, and, and so it's nice that we're able to take care of this right now and, and not have to talk about raising taxes. So good job to all of you, and, and kudos to you for doing the job that you guys have been doing, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and so again, what Ms. Olson and her team have submitted or presented to us this morning doesn't include some of the, those funds from the federal government, which we don't know what that's going to look like, or how that's going to look like, but I'm not going to miss an opportunity to explain what that is. We have not received any money yet from the federal government. According to census data, we're expecting around $13 million or so to come in over a two-year period, but we don't know what those monies could be used for. So it could be that it's only used for a very distinct item. I've had citizens talk to me about infrastructure and roads and sewer and, in lieu of the utility rate study and all of these different things, but be mindful that behind that, I believe President Biden's going to be speaking today, there's another $2 trillion infrastructure bill that they're talking about, which, who knows what that looks like, but that's roads and sewer and infrastructure and those types of things. So some of these deferred maintenance, again, Ms. Olson and her team did a great job presenting it, but some of these, like fire trucks and police vehicles could potentially be used with that money, again, not knowing any of the strings that are attached to any of this money. And as Ms. Olson alluded, it's, we're eligible for those funds if we have expenses that Treasury's guidance identifies for us to do. But, so when looking at this, we're, we're here, you know, really, our, our objective is, it's Mr. Knutson's role to present us with a balanced budget based on the priorities of this council, and through his team and Ms. Olson, they've put together a five-year forecast that shows a really positive outlook. And so we just need to determine and come up with a consensus on, on revenue. Are, are we comfortable with the current projections and revenue sources we have, or do we want to discuss additional revenue sources at this time?
Can I add to that? I guess we keep saying positive outlook, I guess maybe we're looking at the wrong slides.
If she turns it one more.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there, there we go.
Well, if we stop there, the book is great. Oh, the next page, the guy dies. But I guess my concern is, like, yeah, if we look at the surplus deficit for those years, you know, we're doing good, but when we start looking at the, the letters in red, it starts getting concerning, even if we, you know, decide, okay, we're going to protest and not worry about the PSPRS and take that $4 million out of it, we're still in deficit spending at that point. I guess my question is with the, and the deferred maintenance vehicles and staffing, is that a, with those numbers, is that a wish list? Is that a most needed? I mean, what, on a level of, I guess, 1 to 10? I mean, where are we as far as, you know, that $7 million? You know, could we get away with spending $2 million that year, but we really need to spend 6, but we could spend 12 if everyone got... to spend $6, but we could spend 12 if everyone got their wishes? I mean, kind of, can you give us an idea of where that number might be on importance level?
Yeah. Mayor Sheehan, Councilmember Dolan, if I may, I guess kind of putting some of those things in perspective is just going through the budget process that we have this year. We have some good news in terms of some wiggle room that we can look at, some keys, just a small amount of key positions that can assist us with moving forward. So, that's the good news. And that's the first time since I've been here that I can, I can make those statements. Previous positions were offset by another reduction in a position. So, if you want a new position in that department, we're going to reduce a vacant position to make up for that. Putting things in perspective, we have about between $11 and $12 million in some total requests coming from the different departments over and above the base budgets this year. That does not include the capital outlay for a full-year plan of fire engines and fire trucks. That does include one refurb and one new engine, but it doesn't include multiple years of that. So, and keeping perspective that in terms of like, Ms. Olson talks about limited staff, limited resources, we're doing the best we can with what we have. We're not complaining, we're doing our jobs, we're providing all the services to the community and the residents that we possibly can, but we're stretched thin at times. So, if that kind of answers your question a little bit, I can go on, but I wanted to make sure that that does address your question.
That does, thank you.
Great, thank you.
If I can tee off a little bit in terms of like, stretched thin, right? So, we do have some requests that are coming from the departments. We can't look at them all, right? So, and typically that process is we stay within our base budget. Every department's got a base budget and then we look at the cost savings from the previous year and we can look at some supplemental items, one-time-only costs, and we use the savings from the previous year to pay for, you know, equipment, different things there. Not ongoing, typically not ongoing, but it's mowers, vehicles, software, things like that, that may come up that's vital for our service levels. This year, you'll see, the presented to council here in the upcoming weeks and months and part of the work session and then the eventual adoption of the budget by council, you'll see some recommendations for a handful of positions. In my mind, where I need to target some bottlenecks throughout the organization. So, that's key. So, if we can identify positions that have a positive ripple effect throughout other divisions, other departments, that, then those are the ones that are looking as top priority. So, that's the good news. I can come to council and recommend some of those things that we haven't been able to do without. We have accountants, HR professionals, we have across all different departments, folks that rely on financial reports. We have our staff right now that are generating financial reports, but they're also working in the background of the software and looking at the coding and things like that, that can't occur. We're not, those folks are experts in their fields, but they're not experts on the backend of these software programs. We need to bring folks in to take a look at how we can assist the users of these programs. Financial reporting is something that we make our decisions on, staff, council, all day long. That's vital. Those are certain things that we have been trying to muddle through for the last several years. And again, so the good news is we can come back and maybe look at something along those lines that helps alleviate strains and stresses throughout the organization. So, again, looking at that, a little bit, if I can, if it's okay, to talk about the deferred maintenance and the budgets of the past. So, remember Prop 409, remember expenditure limitation? And for several years prior to that, to Prop 409 going before the voters, we, the city, we minimized our training budgets, we minimized any type of vehicle replacement, we minimized, if not eliminated, any type of maintenance on our facilities. So, the generator, the chief dwell came and asked for council's approval a couple weeks back. That was a 25-year-old, 27-year-old generator. We're, I mean, these are old pieces of equipment that need to be looked at. So, keep that in mind because those bills are coming due. We've had some individuals, some experts that went through the police facility here in the last couple of weeks, and I don't know what the outcome is going to be, but I guarantee it's not going to be cheap. There are plumbing, AC issues, other issues within this facility here as well as some of the other facilities. So, I just want to put all these things in perspective. To echo the comment from earlier, this is not doomsday. All we're trying to do is look at the numbers, look at the needs, look at the levels of service that we provide to the public and keeping our eye on the service delivery to the residents. That's always going to be our goal 100% of the time and we want to paint that picture. So, we're making decisions that benefit that, that goal on the short term and long term. So, that's simply what we're trying to accomplish here today. So, I appreciate the feedback and this is going to help as we go through the two more work sessions that are coming up.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll bring it back to council for consensus. Is the consensus to not look at additional revenue sources at this time for this budget year?
Mr. Mayor, as I said earlier, yeah, that is the consensus. Right now, we're fine. As you said, we don't know what kind of funds are coming down the road through the federal government because of these relief packages, but raising additional revenue right now is not needed. And, yeah, are we operating on a shoestring budget? Sure we are. We're government. Everything we do, we have no money. Every penny we have belongs to the taxpayers. And so, operating on a budget where we're not fat cats is the way we should be doing things. So, as I said, the city staff's done a great job and we have the dollars to help them out a bit now and so, let's do that and help them where we are. But I don't think we need to raise revenue or taxes in order to be able to do that this year. Next year, that may be a different story. We're looking at the five-year forecast and we'll see how things play out over this next year. But I think right now, today, we're fine where we sit.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Mayor Koch?
Yeah, I would echo Councilman Lane's comments. At this point, I don't see a point in moving forward with any additional, but you know, where this is the beginning process of the budget process and having been through this a few times, this is a very 10,000-foot overview of where we're at. So, today, I would be comfortable just moving forward without that. But again, we, this is, we're just starting, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I agree. I definitely think this year, we're doing good. I think what we definitely, I would like to continue to give staff that direction, that continue to get us those wants and needs. Sometimes they're one in the same, definitely. And I think we need to, we do have some time right now, we do have some money come in. We're not sure exactly how we're going to be able to use it, but I mean, we do have the time to figure that out and to get that together. So, next year, when we're sitting in this position, we have another year's worth of numbers, we know where we are in year one of the five-year and we're starting another five-year. So, I definitely think just keep the information coming, let us know. I think we are sitting in a pretty good position right now, but there still is a lot of unknown out there. So, like I said, hopefully we know a lot more within the next year. But if I look back at where we were a year ago, I didn't, I don't think any of us thought we'd be sitting where we are right now, having this discussion. So, yeah, I think we're definitely good for this year, but like I said, keep the information coming and let us know so we can stay ahead of all the deferred maintenance vehicles and staffing issues. Thank you.
You guys have figured it out. I just want to thank the citizens of Lake Havasu City for all their hard work and all these revenues and seeing 11, what does this budget message shows, we're up 16.9 million or 11.4 over 19, 20 estimates. So, thank you to everybody that's doing the job. Thank goodness we live in Lake Havasu City and we're really blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynn, are you comfortable with that direction? Yeah, perfect. And Councilmember Moses, you're good?
Yeah, sorry, I am good with that. If I could get Jill's opinion on, so the bottom line is basically our savings account, right? Of 37 to 28 to 20 to 13 to 8?
Yes.
At what point is it, you know, where's our fiscal responsibility to have that savings account at, you know, what level is it an appropriate level where we need to really start being worried? Because 37 million seems like a lot. And then in two years, we almost cut that in half. At what point on these projections, if these projections are true or inaccurate, you know, where is that fiscally not responsible anymore?
Well, we certainly, we're carving out the budget stabilization reserve, so we would at least have that left. That's the number we would focus on as far as a savings account for emergencies. These estimates show that the end of FY '25, we're only going to have $8.3 million left in our savings account compared to 37.8. So, we'll soon, within the next year or two after that, we'll soon reach the point where we have no excess.
Right. And so, I'm really asking for what number, you know, would you like to see in there? And then I think based on that number, we'll be able to see where we need to start taking action if all things hold true. Does that make, am I being clear?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses, so we use it as a savings account because it's really easy to describe it that way because you can kind of take it to your personal finances. It's not really like that necessarily is with the budget stabilization. Ms. Olson explained early on in her presentation that currently the financial policy that we adopted is 25%. Her and her staff are going to go back and bring back some recommendations to council what that looks like. So, that, the BSR is truly the savings account. The other monies are carryforwards or the balance left or additional resources left after that budget year. I'd also like to point, which has not been part of our discussion yet this morning, is that these deficits, even in this five-year forecast addressing PSPRS and some of these other things that we haven't strategically determined how we're going to do that, our carryforwards from year to year are greater than what these numbers in red look like. So...
So, then are you saying that that ending resources after, available after BSR should be zero?
It could be zero and we still have a savings account is what, just to answer that question.
What I'm asking is, that's okay?
It's not okay. I mean, we need to always be in the black, but where we find that equilibrium is where that's the balance. These are taxpayers' resources. So, us having them sitting in a bank account and not putting them to use is not in the best interest, but being fiscally responsible to ensure we can deliver the services that the citizens are requiring. So, we're trying to find that equilibrium. And again, this is a five-year forecast that's going to adjust, and I believe Councilmember Dolan alluded to it, next year, we'll add another year onto it. And we've seen really great collections prior to the pandemic, over-forecast in the pandemic and now we have to see what the pandemics brought to us, you know, new residents that relocated here, new folks that are buying goods and services from us. It will know that pretty readily into the next budget year. So, yeah, it's finding that equilibrium. So, it's kind of, it's that balance point. And I think that this five-year forecast that Ms. Olson and her team put together in both areas allows Mr. Knutson and his team to bring the strategic hires that you speak of that are going to make ripple effects throughout the organization, be more effective and efficient as a community and still finding that balance point. I mean, I think that what we'll see based on this, again, this is a real high level. When we get to our future discussion items, that's where Mr. Knutson will present his budget to us and be able to identify those priorities. Even if we wanted to do all of the deferred maintenance next year that's identified here, we don't have the resources staff-wise or time to do that. So, I mean, this is just letting us know what's out there. So, is my perception and take from the presentation today. So, hopefully that answers the question of how much is enough? Policy-wise, through the financial policy, Ms. Olson and her team will come back and clearly she doesn't believe three months is enough, which is what the 25% is, and give us a new idea of what that might look like. Thank you.
Guys, question?
Yes.
PSPRS, if 4 million is 100% and we think we might be able to be totally fine with 70 to 75%, can I assume that since that's half, we're talking about 2 million a year to keep us at 70 to 75%?
That's, that's close, yes.
Okay. So, we could, in theory, if we're okay at 70, 75, we could drop those years, 2 million each and, okay, which would give us 16.3 at the end of '24, '25. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then just to offer some information for those listening, we're in this every day. So, what 100% of PSPRS funding means is that every person that's on staff now retires at the exact same time and that pension liability is covered. So, in reality, that's never going to happen. And so, that's why, as Councilmember Lane mentioned, 70% to 75% is more appropriate on that funding level. But just again, for those listening, I'm like, of course you'd want to be 100% funded, not necessarily because it's not, that would never really happen in the real world, so. All right, any last comments? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn? All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Koch. Thank you, everybody. Have a great morning.